My paper got out of order here. 12A, Public Hearing in Order for 1507-1412 in a Matter of Surrender of a Portion of Milliron Road to the City of Junction City. And we have Jay Blamey here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We're here this afternoon to conduct a public hearing in the matter of a surrender of a portion of Milliron Road to the City of Junction City. Junction City has requested that Lane County surrender the portion of Milliron Road located within an annexed portion of the city limits. The portion of Milliron Road to be surrendered is approximately 740 feet in length and lies between the easterly right-of-way of Highway 99 and the east line of a 40-foot-wide public road easement known as Dreas Way. This transfer comes as the final action of an IGA between Lane County, Junction City, and the State of Oregon Department of Corrections. The IGA required that Junction City request the surrender of the road after all road improvements related to the construction of the new correctional facility and hospital constructed by the State Department of Corrections was completed. All legal notice has been provided regarding this matter as required by ORS 373.270. And in conclusion, Lane County staff recommends Option 1 of the order to approve the order to surrender the described portion of Milliron Road to Junction City.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. I don't see anyone signed up for the public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak on this matter? Seeing, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Stewart?
Chair, I have no approval of order 15-07-14-12 in the matter of surrender of a portion of Milliron Road to the City of Junction City.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion to the motion? Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. Now, a little bit of a refresher on Milliron Road. I know they answer these questions. Where is it in location to, let's say, Fiddler's Green Golf Course?
It is north.
How far?
Maybe a half a mile to a mile.
Okay. And Milliron Road is approximately the city limits of Junction City now, isn't it?
I believe so.
Yeah, there's welcome to Junction City just after you get to Milliron Road. Now, about five miles or so after that, you get to Junction City. So they, no complaints there. Junction City expanded their urban growth boundary and their city limits to Milliron Road, which is just a few hundred feet from the airport, which is a few...
The state limits are actually at Meadowview, but it's...
Excuse me. Yeah, so it's this side of Milliron Road even. Thank you very much. It's in your district, Jay.
Yeah.
My former house district. But the point there is that the City of Eugene stretches to almost the airport. There's a little bit of incorporated area in the industrial area around the airport. And if you're a pretty good golfer, Sid, you could hit a ball from the city limits of Eugene to the city limits of Junction City now. If you drive downtown, if you leave in Eugene, I think the sign says Junction City 10 miles. Now, back in my early days, Marsha, when you were around in the city, on the Eugene City Council, I'd always talk about, you know, if we don't do what it takes to judiciously work with our urban growth boundary, then the cities outside of Eugene are going to edge our way. And the people said, oh, that's never, never going to happen. I said, no, it's going to happen. They're going to edge our way. Well, Junction City is now a golf shot from Eugene, where it used to be about 10 miles, eight, nine miles or so from the city limits to the city limits. So, but, you know, the case in point is that in the City of Eugene, we didn't want urban sprawl, and certainly we don't have urban sprawl. But the worst kind of urban sprawl, not in this case, mind you, because Junction City has great reasons for their expansion of their city limits down Highway 99. And it's not uniform all the way around. It's just kind of a finger. But the worst kind of urban sprawl is when smaller cities get bigger and grow into where the growth is dictated or supposed to be, which is kind of the Eugene-Springfield, Milliron, Santa Clara metropolitan area here. So I'm just stating that it was probably close to 20 years ago I first started saying, man, they're going to come, if we don't do something here, then they're going to come our way. Guess what? It's a golf shot from Eugene to Junction City now.
Any further discussion to the motion? Seeing, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That moves us on to Item B, Order 1507-1410 in the matter of established... Whoops, wrong page again. Sorry, I keep shuffling pages. Public hearing in order 1507-1413 in the matter of surrender of a portion of Glenwood Boulevard and East 17th Avenue to the City of Springfield. And again, we have Mr. Blamey.
Okay. Thank you. Again, we're here to conduct a public hearing in the matter of a surrender of a portion of Glenwood Boulevard and East 17th Avenue to the City of Springfield. This transfer comes as a final action of an IGA between Lane County and the City of Springfield. That IGA required that Springfield request the surrender of both roads after the completion of a resurfacing project that was completed during the summer of 2014. All legal notice has been provided regarding this matter as required by ORS 373.270. And in conclusion, Lane County staff recommends Option 1 to approve the order to surrender the described portions of Glenwood Boulevard and East 17th Avenue to the City of Springfield.
Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone signed up for the public hearing? Is anyone else that wishes to speak? Then I am going to close the public hearing and I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Stewart?
I move approval of order 15-7-14-13, a matter of surrender of a portion of Glenwood Boulevard and East 17th Avenue to the City of Springfield.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion to the motion? Commissioner Farr.
Back in my early days on the Eugene City Council, an order, a motion came before us to cede jurisdiction of the Glenwood area to the City of Springfield. And it made sense to me. It was on the other side of the freeway. There are a lot of other reasons it made sense to me. So this is kind of a continuation of that motion that, like other land use decisions, can it make a snail's pace when it comes to Envision Eugene and decisions regarding what happens around the Eugene urban growth boundary. But it's a move in the right direction, and I'm certainly in favor of this motion.
Further discussion to the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Blamey.
Thank you.
So with that, we are going to recess into executive session, and we will be coming back out, and we'll, first item will be Item 12C. But the Board of County Commissioners will meet an executive session to review and evaluate the employee-related performance of the chief executive officer of any public body, a public officer, employee, or staff member who does not request an open hearing. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS 1926602I, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet an executive session for the purposes listed above. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made in the executive session. We will come back into public session, and I would ask the Board to quickly move up to the Board of Commissioners' conference room. We are in recess. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners back into session for Tuesday, July 14, 2015. And we are on Item 12C, which is the Discussion Action and Board Direction Concerning the Land Management and Land Management Division's Fiscal Year 15-16 Long Range Planning Work Program. What amount?
Thank you, Chair Bozovic, and good afternoon, Commissioners. So, as you mentioned, the subject of today's work session is to review the Land Management Division's Long Range Planning Work Program. We generally come to the Board right around the start of each fiscal year to talk with you about our priorities for the coming year. As is the case with most programs in the county, resources are tight and there's a lot of work to be done. So we generally like to check in with the Board and see what your thoughts are on the list of prioritized actions that the division has come up with, which have then been vetted by the Planning Commission, which this list before you has been. And then we bring it to you for your final recommendations, changes, additions, et cetera. So I think I want to start off this work session a little bit different than we've done in the past. I want to just give a brief overview of the Long Range Planning Work Group and how it differentiates between the current planning group, and this is an exercise we did with the Planning Commission, that they thought it was helpful, because a lot of times for the public and other folks, these, it can be kind of misunderstood what sort of things the Board typically directs us to do and what sort of things we work on and why. And I just, a good way to do this is sort of compare and contrast what the current planning or permit processing work group does and what the Long Range Planning or Comprehensive Work Program does. So just to talk about the focus of the different groups, which are both separate work programs but within the Land Management Division. So the current planning work group kind of focuses on the operational day-to-day activities. They issue the permits, the special use permits, and they produce the products that are needed for applicants, customers today, whereas the Long Range staff focus is more on the strategic work of the division and its work that's done to prepare for the needs of the future. Things like coordinated population studies, analyses, comprehensive plan amendments, new plan documents, et cetera. So the clients sort of are the same. We're dealing with the public, the Board of Commissioners, the other, the cities in the county. But on the long-range side of things, we have all those same customers, and the thought behind it is that we're also working for the, you know, future generations, because these plans have a 20-, 30-, 50-year planning horizon sometimes. So it's a little bit different client base. I already talked about the deliverables, which, you know, for current planning, there's special use permits and those sort of decisions, whereas we're kind of focusing more on code updates, studies, special projects. And the timelines for the current planning staff are truncated. You know, there's statutory requirements for the work products that they produce that have to be put out in a certain timeframe. And this is kind of important, and I'll talk about why this matters in a couple of minutes. But they definitely work on a tighter schedule, whereas we have more multi-year projects that sometimes are spread out. So before I get into the work program for this year, I want to talk about some of the progress on last year's work program. And that's because a lot of the projects we're dealing with this year, or that we're proposing to work on this year are actually continuing from last year. There's, last year was kind of, I would say it was one of the most different work plans that we, success-wise, that we've brought to you in several years, just because there are a lot of challenges in the Land Management Division, where typically we work through almost every project on the work program. As you'll see in a minute here, there were several projects from last year's work program that we didn't even have a chance to work on. And I'll talk a little bit about some of the challenges we faced. But basically, the work program for last year was broken into three tiers. It's the same way we do it every year. This year, it's the same, where we have our Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3 projects, and it's just a way to categorize them. We generally consider the Tier 1 projects, those things that are sort of mission-critical functions that we have to do to maintain the day-to-day operations of the division. Those are essential functions. The Tier 2 are typically ongoing projects, continuing from the last year, that it would, there would be some sort of a resource loss, or if we didn't follow through on it, it would have sort of, some sort of impact to our current work program. And then the Tier 3 projects are what we call the discretionary projects, but in reality, a lot of these are important projects that we just don't have the resources every year to address. So I'm not going to go through every single project that was on the work program for last year, but what I want to highlight for you is what we've achieved so far. All the projects highlighted in green are projects that are complete from the work program last year, and these were, you can see the majority of the Tier 1 projects are complete, most of the Tier 2, and we've started to work on the Tier 3. There are several projects that are sort of halfway done and a certain amount of completeness, and these are highlighted here. It's kind of hard to see, but those are the projects listed in yellow from last year's work program. And then finally, there's a number of projects that staff wasn't able to begin work on last year. Some of these, like the one highlighted in the Tier 1, which is the Risk Map, Flood Insurance Program Risk Map project, this wasn't due to staffing shortages or anything like that. That project just wasn't ready yet from the federal government, hadn't brought that product to us for adoption yet. So that was sort of outside of our scope of control. But the remainder of the Tier 3 projects are just work items that staff didn't have resources to work on yet, and a lot of these are going to be carrying over onto the work program for this year. So to talk about some of the challenges, last year was a little bit different in the Land Management Division. We had a lot of foreseen and unforeseen challenges that we had to face. There were quite a few projects that weren't on this work program that probably should have been, that were important projects that the division tackled last year. A main one was, we did an internal process improvement strategy that we worked with. Roland Hoskins was an outside consultant, came in, and he led the planning staff through, I think it's a lean method of process improvement. That actually took a lot of resources to work through, but in the end, it actually helped us identify a lot of important priorities that actually make it onto the work program for this year. So that was one of the things we did. We also completed a pretty important scanning project of all our online documents called LMD Pro, and that's another project that wasn't on this work program, but timing-wise, it just happened to end during the last fiscal year. And that actually required a lot of staff time to build, you know, the website and get all these documents online. So it's sort of an unsolicited plug, but I did want to put out there that now the divisions, all of the divisions' planning documents, property record files, all that stuff is now available online to the public, and that's several hundred thousand documents. So that was sort of a big success for the program. And then we also worked on a fee analysis. The division's going through a review of our current fee structure, and that's just, was completed in the last year as well. And that was sort of unforeseen, timing-wise. We didn't have that on the work program. There are also a number of major staff changes in the division this past year, which the Board is probably aware of. And we also had three vacant positions for a good amount of the year, which we're just filling now and finally fully staffing up again. So my outlook for the coming year and the work plan for the coming year is a lot more positive than what's reflected here from last year. So I just wanted to give you a heads-up on that. Moving forward, these are sort of our priorities for the upcoming fiscal year, and we have three main priorities. The first one is to modernize the land use code, and this is no secret. This has been on the work program for several years, and we sort of started with an incremental approach last year, where we started a number of scoping projects to review the land use code. Lane Code Chapter 14, which deals with the procedural requirements in the code, Chapter 13, which is our subdivision and partition requirements, and then ultimately, Lane Code Chapter 16, which is the actual zoning districts. So we started going through a scoping process to identify all the errors and issues with those different codes. And as we've talked about in the past, most of those were written over 20 years ago and are woefully outdated and need a lot of work. That was identified as our number-one priority through our process improvement strategy. Staff identified that as the single biggest barrier to quality customer service, as well as, you know, efficiency and the ability to get permits out quickly. So that's, in this work plan, you're going to see that as our main priority. The next is supporting our regional partners, and this is based on the reality that Eugene and Springfield are both going through their separate comprehensive planning efforts right now. Eugene with Envision Eugene and Springfield with the 2030 work. This also reflects the fact that this past year, the Board allocated some economic development video lottery funding to the division to focus on these, both the large cities and the small-city planning efforts. So we really sort of dedicated resources to deal with the needs of our partner cities. So that's another major allocation on our work plan this year, is staff resources for city coordination. And then finally, we want to stay ahead of state current and address sort of the changing regulatory landscape to make sure that our code doesn't fall out of date. So this involves dealing with all the legislative required updates, and we expect that there will be some in the coming year. So that's our final priority for moving forward. So included in your packet is attachment A, I believe, is the Long Range Program work list. And it's not very different from the work program last year, because a lot of those projects are continuing, ongoing, and carrying over. We did, after reviewing the work program with the Planning Commission, make some changes, primarily to the Tier 3 discretionary projects. We actually removed the scoping of the Goal 5 inventory update off of the work program for this year. There's so much other work to be done with our code updates, and we felt that that probably wasn't achievable. That's going to be a very large and complex project. And again, although it's important to eventually update our Goal 5 inventory, we feel that the focus should really be working on the code and getting the code working before we go into those separate elements of the comprehensive plan, the different inventories, et cetera. So the Board has this list in front of them. There's only a couple of things that I'll point out. Last year, the Board prioritized an update of our telecommunications ordinance. That was sort of added on at the very end of the work program, if resources were available to update that telecom code. That had come at the urging of some of the industry folks, had seen some issues with our telecommunications code and asked that we take a look at it. In this past year, there was actually an FCC ruling that sort of clarified some issues with our code, and we've since then written an internal memorandum that sort of deals with a lot of those same concerns that the industry had with our code. And functionally with that interpretation, our code is working at this time. We're not, we're not working against the FCC ruling, I should say. We're in, you know, lockstep with it. It's just not memorialized in our code, but our day-to-day operations do follow the guidance of that. I know that there still is interest from at least one of the cell carriers to see our code worked on, so it's still on the work program for this year. But I just wanted to point out that staff doesn't feel as high as a priority as maybe it would have been last year. So I think I'll leave it with that and open up for questions. Oh, last thing, in these highlighted items, I want to point out that there's certain things on the work plan, you'll see where there's a possibility for a wide range of staff resources. And that's just because we don't, we can't predict how much, how many resources or how many staff hours it's going to take to deal with these. One is this sort of looming Endangered Species Act compliance issue that's been out there for a while. We keep being told that, you know, it's next week or next month that the National Marine Fisheries Service is going to issue their biological opinion and their prudent, reasonable alternatives to the different jurisdictions, in which case we may have to update our flood code. So that's something that we can't really predict how many resources that'll take. The other is the Measure 91, the marijuana updates. There is some unknowns there, from our perspective, about how that will impact land use. So we've allocated sort of a range of staff resources there. Finally, I'll point out that Item 2.3, which was, at the time of writing of the memo, was on the Long Range Work Program list. This had to do with a possible appeal of the Goshen project, which is since, which we were dealing with on remand. That has since been settled. Staff addressed the Goshen issues. It's been finalized at Lubbock and has not been appealed again, so that project is final at this point. So that's actually a project that can come off the list. And I think I will leave it at that and open it up for questions, discussion.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Kier, thank you for walking us through the work plan. I would probably agree with you on some of these as I look at it. You know, we know that the flood plan code is probably going to have to be addressed once we find out what the agreement is between FEMA and NIPS, but I'm hopeful that it'll probably be pretty well spelled out in the states. We're not going to have to spend a lot of time figuring out what we need to adopt, so hopefully we won't be spending that large of an allocation. Same with marijuana rules. I think that a lot of that may not, you know, I haven't followed the bills and I haven't gotten a most recent update with what finally passed, but I think it was my understanding that the OLCC was probably going to try to drag that out, and it may not actually take place until the following year, my understanding. So hopefully we'll have some resources to get down into some of these other priorities. One item that has been brought to the Board's attention, I think through public comment and has been brought to mind because I'm the commissioner for the area, has to do with Goshen specifically. We have a company that purchased a piece of property before we finalized the process and believe that they had the ability to do what they purchased the piece of property for. And I think in working with Mark Rust and kind of going through it, it might be able to be addressed so that they can use the piece of property how they intended. It might be able to be addressed through one of these efforts in the code updates. Is that your understanding? And I'd like to understand how maybe I can bring that as a priority, because we're talking about potentially 100 to 125 jobs located here in the next, you know, three to five years, and they need to, you know, make sure that everything can transition appropriately and they can do this. So what are your thoughts?
Sure. So, yeah, I have spoken with Mark Rust about this issue, and, yeah, it's my understanding that as the property is now zoned with the new zoning in Goshen, it's probably going to be prohibitive based on the, potentially, the job ratio that is projected for the site and what's required under the code. But, yeah, there is the option to sort of open back up the Goshen district and take a look at those sort of concerns for this specific site. I guess the division's preference, and I think this is probably what Mark Rust relayed to you, is that we're sort of, at this point in time, we're making a catalog of all the potential issues that are involved in Chapter 16, and we'd like to address them holistically. And we do have an update of Chapter 16 on the work plan before you. Granted, it's sort of the initial scoping of it. So I can't, I wouldn't be so bold as to say we would actually bring to the Board this year a code change on Goshen. We would probably bring some recommendations on code changes to Chapter 16 as part of a larger scoping project that Goshen may be part of. But, I mean, that, the update of Chapter 16, as you're probably aware, will be probably a multi-year project. So it's something that we could address in here. I don't know that timing-wise it will work for this applicant. I would, I would think we might get to a point within the next two to three years where we're finally making, you know, whole clock changes to Chapter 16 in a few years. I think it's been on the work program in the past as sort of a standalone project, and we identified it as a two-to-three-year project. So this year, it's just scoping on Chapter 16. So that's about as far as what would be anticipated in this work program without some Board direction to kind of prioritize that specific item.
Okay. So I guess what I'll need to do is follow up with the landowner, but, you know, because they have a timeline that they're working towards, and I want to make sure that we don't, if I hear multi-year effort here, and our multi-year effort coordinates when they're expecting to come in and get a permit, and then, as we see right now, we tried to do some code updates and we got challenged, and we're in the middle of referring those back to the Planning Commission to reconsider, I guess, site distances for accessory buildings.
Right.
You know, I understand the efficiency of trying to do it all at once, but I also would hope that we'd have the flexibility that, you know, when we're talking about economic development and trying to create job creation, that we may have to consider what their timeline is and have the flexibility to try to do a surgical fix. Because, you know, as I remember, when we started on the Goshen process, it was always my understanding that if you own a piece of property, you'd be able to do, currently, you'd be able to continue or do what you intended to do with that piece of property if you bought it under the code. You could elect to go with the new goal exception and go with the new codes. But that's not how it ended up being. And in the end, we did a broad sweep, change of the zone and the codes that went with did a broad sweep, change of the zone and the codes that went with it. And so now they have to, existing folks have to go by the, the new code. So they don't have the choice of old code, new code.
Right. That's correct.
You know, I kind of made a promise to the citizens when we were out there and we went through the process. And I want to make sure that the promise is, is that, you know, whether it's your Umpqua Dairy that's bought a piece of property five years ago and they're going to do a, you know, a distribution center there, or your Zip-O that just purchased a piece of property with the intent that, you know, I want to move all my Eugene facilities out to one location. That's been in the works for years. And I want to make sure that they're able to, to do what they intended.
Yeah, we certainly understand that. And I think the sort of opt-in option was something that was, as you said, on the table initially. I think primarily because of some of the challenges that we faced opposition-wise from the Thousand Friends and the different groups like that. That's why some of those things were moved off the table. And we went the direction we did to sort of ensure that there's minimum job densities on these parcels because the whole case was that this is a regionally significant area with unique properties for sort of high-density job development. So I think that is probably, if we get into looking at amending the code, we'll, we'll probably have to revisit some of those same challenges. But it's, if that's something the board directs, it's certainly a surgical amendment that staff could work on.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So maybe expanding on that a little bit. And also, a couple of questions regarding the timing of the, both the 2030 Plan and Invision Eugene or what you're hearing. But so just recently, we received, are part of the, what's called the Pacific Northwest Manufacturing Partnership. So we're now part of what's called the Manufacturing Communities. I know Commissioner Farr, when he was back in DC, was part of United Front last year. This, this was one of our, our top priorities. And so we received this designation. So I, I asked a couple of the, the local, what I call, real estate developers, especially on the commercial side, exactly what does this mean? What, what do they see as some possibilities here? And this is, this is where I'm, I'm kind of glad to hear Commissioner Stewart talk about this because I think we're going to need to maybe potentially open this up, Goshen, a little bit to be a little flexible. Because if this is, if this positions ourself to be, to be designated as a manufacturing communities, and I think Goshen may fit that bill very, very nicely. You know, this kind of puts us toward the top of the line. So in the federal government in particular, so especially infrastructure costs. I think this, and this is where the, when I talked to the developers here locally, they said, you know, this, this really potentially puts us in, in a line to kind of be one of those first out there when it comes to maybe infrastructure costs, maybe some grants, that type of thing. And so, so I think that's going to be key. This works if land's available. And so I think Goshen may fit this bill. And this is why I'm asking in particular, what's, what are you hearing as far as the timing on the 2030 Plan and Invision Eugene? Because if there's commercial industrial lands, and I keep hearing that maybe Springfield is now shrinking it, and which I'm a little disappointed. But if there's, I mean, this is beneficial to all of us. And obviously, this is where we can partner with, with each of the communities. So, so the timing on that. But also, you know, as we learn more about what these, the manufacturing communities designation will do, I think, my guess is Glenda Polling's probably going to play a pretty significant role in that, that piece as well. But I, I, just to coordinate that as we, as we go along. But your, I guess the timing.
Yeah.
Is what I'm really interested in because.
Sure.
As we mentioned before, I mean, the split was in 2007, and here we are in 2015, where we've, you know, I don't even feel like we're, we're still running down the first base line and having gotten there yet.
Well, I, we've met with both the City of Springfield staff and the City of Eugene in the last month, as a matter of fact, to talk about moving forward. And I, I can tell you, the, the board's going to have a busy fall from what I can see with their projected work programs. They've got work sessions upcoming. I know Springfield's already set their, a joint public hearing with the board on the 2030 work, which I believe is scheduled for, I don't want to misspeak, it's in September sometime.
Yeah, I, I remember seeing that.
Yeah. So, so that's definitely coming. I would say that Springfield is moving ahead of Eugene. But Eugene still has some issues to work through with their, I believe with their residential component and their UGB expansion. But they're, they'll be coming to the board, it's my understanding, with a work session probably in August to talk about timelines and when things will be moving forward. So I think you'll be hearing from Eugene shortly. And you already have a, a hearing scheduled at the City of Springfield on the 2030 work.
So one, one other thing that the, that this is, the possibilities for the manufacturing communities is that you, we might be able to have this possibility of leveraging funds for wetlands mitigation, which in my view would be very key, and even in the Goshen area, obviously.
Yeah, some wetlands in Goshen.
Yeah, there's, there's some key. So just, I just ask that you keep that in mind because, again, this is brand new. This just, just occurred. And I believe they're holding a press conference about it tomorrow back in DC. So this is, this is right in our lap. And so this is a real, some great potential. But really want to say thank you to the work that you've done here. And I've really for, I know the struggle's been with the, with the funding, but just yeoman's job. And, and thank you. And it's great to see Kent Howe back in the audience, too. And glad to see that. So, so appreciate it. Great work. Thanks.
So I have one quick question. There are two and a half FTE available due to this work. Is that the same amount that we had last fiscal year?
Yeah, that's correct. But last year, I actually ran the time card reports to see how much time was actually spent on long-range work last year, and it was closer to one and a half FTE. Most of the long-range staff were covering the current planning staff. So we do perform backup because that was one of the things I was going to talk about with the timelines.
With the three, three FTE that were.
Gone, yeah.
Open positions, yeah.
And that's always the pressing issue is when you have a statutory clock ticking and you have to get a decision out. The priorities, the way they sift out is the long-range work always takes it backstage to the current planning because those decisions need to be issued. So this year, with filling those current planning positions, I'm optimistic that we will actually have two and a half warm bodies in the office to dedicate the long-range work.
We got pretty far down that list last year with just the one and a half. So.
Yeah, I think that was mainly because the cities really didn't impact us as much as we thought. Whereas this year, I have a feeling they will.
Yeah. I think there was a little bit of a slowdown in Invision Eugene that we didn't anticipate, as well as even in the Glenwood and Springfield UGB expansions. So, and I think even Florence, after we managed to figure out how not to charge them for some of their work, didn't move forward with some stuff they thought they were going to move forward with. So.
Correct.
I think that's all going to fall this year. So, so some of those estimates may be up in the, in the, you know, coordination up there may, may go longer. You never know. So it looks, you know, I don't really have any arguments with the way the, the planning commission sifted things out priority-wise. Just wish we had more bodies. Maybe it's, you know, because especially, it's concerning to me to hear that we may not be able to get to a, a, an amendment or code update or whatever it is we need to do to get these people that purchased property in, in Goshen legal with what they intended to do before we came along and, and got the Goal 14 exception. So that may be some further discussion by the board and whether we access some additional video lottery funds to get that work accomplished. You know, that may, you know, although I've had conversations with the economic development people and we're pretty well booked out on what we're doing with video lottery funds right now. So it's concerning to me. And I, I hope there's some way we can figure out how those, those two entities that did purchase those properties can move forward and, and how we can, and how we can maybe go back and get them grandfathered. I don't know what, even if it's whether we carve them out of the Goal 14 area or something like that. So it'll be, be an interesting task for the future. Any other questions or comments about long-range work plan? If not, somebody want to make a motion? Or is it just, yeah, there is action. I guess we need a motion. Yes, Mr. Chair, I would move staff's recommendation for the long-range work plan as presented with the, you know, taking into account the comments that have been made from the commissioners, just as far as reference.
Mr. Sorensen.
I have a question about the fire season. Assuming the board wants to move ahead with restrictions on fireworks or fires in the coming year, fiscal year that just started, and most specifically, the early part of next summer, when we might have the opportunity to regulate that. Is there any, are there any requirements to expand land use, land management function dollars on, on that issue? Who would do that if we took that effort in the ensuing year?
My, so if I understand, in the coming year, if you're talking about working on the fire safety issue from the, from the land use perspective.
Yeah. Are there land use requirements to initiate restrictions on the use of fireworks?
Specific to the use of fireworks?
There'd be code, it'd be county council.
Not LMD, just county council.
Right. I mean, we don't, we don't have any code language in place, either land use code or otherwise that prohibits fire use, fireworks use.
But I mean, if we were to embark on an effort to restrict fire risk because of a need to change our county ordinances and restrict those fire risks, I'm just asking in terms of this budgeting that covers until June 1 of next year, I mean, July, June 30 until next year, if we wanted to get that ordinance in place, we need staff to do it. And my question is, is any of that staff coming out of LMD's budget?
I wouldn't think so. The issues that would come to mind, connection with fireworks use would probably just come from, from the board's mouth to county councils. Here's, we would probably do the work.
What about other kinds of fire restrictions besides fireworks?
Restrictions, same thing. I, I know that, that planning has or has had the Firewise program. I'm not sure if there's still money there or works being done in that realm or not.
Is that happening, Firewise?
It is, actually. It was part of the continued reauthorization for rural schools. So it's, it's continuing for another year. But I have to say that the way that legislation is written, it's very narrowly defined.
Yeah.
How that work can be done. And it's primarily assisting homeowners with mitigation action. So it's not on the regulatory side. It's the upfront.
It's an incentive.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
There could be, I could foresee more properties, homeowners wanting to pull their property into a fire district. And that work has been staffed by LMD. But that's, that's just sort of a guess as to whether that comes up.
That's special district boundary changes and annexations.
Right. So you may add to the work being done in that regard.
Okay. Well, thanks. That answers my question.
So there was a motion on the floor. Mr. Chair, may I restate it, please?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, I'd move option number one with one amendment that we would add, add the, I guess, the Ireland property code conflict to the Goal 16, or the Chapter 16 code amendment list. Can I make it that specific?
You can. I guess I would want to flesh out a little bit on that. That is, I think if, if you want to carve out individual properties, we'll need specific direction to do it. The commissioners should all be aware that, that, that sort of action may very well result in an appeal of the action. Because a lot of, and Kier spoke to this already, a lot of the basis for getting that exception through had to do with the minimum number of employees on property and some of the things that the current owners' criteria they can't meet. And so backing up on those things with respect to a couple of specific properties may draw the attention of the land watch folk and the Thousand Friends and sort of people who were players in this to begin with. Because it tends to cut against what, some of the discussion points throughout that process. It, it just potentially adds to the timeline. That is, if you want to go there, I think we collectively can do it. But just be aware, if you do, there's going to be potentially more time than one might think for that sort of work, potentially more resources from our department and LMD's.
Okay. Well, I guess it'd probably be most appropriate just to remove the amendment and pass it as recommended. But I'll just speak to the fact that I think personally I have an obligation to represent their needs, being it looked like they potentially could do what they wanted to do before we changed the code.
Second. Then moved in second to accept staff and the planning commission's recommendations on the long-range planning work plan for fiscal 2015 and 16. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As I understand it, we don't have a written order for the board as of yet. We can prepare one quick if that's your desire, or you can leave it as an oral motion or oral order, either way.
I'll, I'll defer to legal counsel if we need an actual order or not, or whether a motion is enough to direct staff to follow the plan that they proposed.
Okay. We typically haven't had an order in the past. And generally, what happens, if there are any revisions, we memorialize those on a document and circulate it to the board afterwards. But since, I think the motion was passed as presented with no changes, I think it'd be relatively simple to track what was done today. But it's legal counsel's call if an order is needed.
Yeah. I don't necessarily think we need a written order. I will leave it to LMD to sort of track the progress. And if there are sort of significant changes to items on the list, we may need to come back to the board to get it amended, basically.
Great. Thank you. Now, and I'll just note, as far as Commissioner Sorensen's question about fire and all that, our Chapter 9 addresses wood stoves and, and when you're allowed to burn those, et cetera, you know, red, green, orange. And it's done in concert with, with El Rapa. I think if we're going to look at additional restrictions for next year, we might want to be, be looking towards county council on Chapter 9 and amendments to Chapter 9, which are not land management related. So same place we did tobacco ordinance. Moving on, going backwards in time, truly did not give the commissioners a lot of time for response to public comments and/or other remonstrance. And we also skipped announcements. But I want to jump all the way back to county administration. Were there any announcements from county administration?
No announcements today. Thank you.
Great. Then I'll get on with commissioners' business announcements. Any issues or remonstrance or anything else, commissioners? Commissioner Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I'd like to announce that coming up this weekend, starting Thursday, is our annual Bohemian Days Festival in Cottage Grove. So that runs for four days and lots of activities. So hopefully, folks can make it down and catch a parade or tend a breakfast out in, up at Bohemian Saddle Park, which is Lane County's probably highest elevation park possibly. But so lots of activities. I'd also like to announce that on July 20th, in concert with two other showings, there'll be a third concert with the Eugene Symphony. It's their 50th year anniversary, and they're holding three free concerts to the public. One which is already essentially sold out, or all the tickets are gone. It starts at the Cuthbert on the 18th, and down in Roseburg on the 19th, and at Bohemia Park in Cottage Grove on the 20th. So on the 20th at 7:00 PM, there'll be a free concert for the symphony, which we're looking forward to. And I wanted to share with my colleagues that I met with. And, um, I wanted to share with my colleagues that I met with, um, Liz Dent from the Oregon Department of Forestry to, um, hear about the US Forest Service's effort in, um, trying to, to improve the spotted owl numbers by moving forward with the pilot plan or pilot, um, uh, program, which is going to be, uh, pretty much all contained in Westland County on our, um, in our Department of Forestry managed lands in regards to removing barred owls. So you've heard the potential controversy around that. Um, Oregon Department of Forestry is, uh, supporting that effort from the standpoint that, um, this is a, basically a study to see if removing the, the barred owl will actually see the increase in the spotted owl numbers. So maybe there'll be some definitive, uh, information gathered as to, yeah, we finally figured out that it was their natural predator that's actually probably mostly impacting the, um, success of the, the spotted owl. So that, um, is probably, uh, going to move forward, I think in November, the, the Board of Forestry will probably, um, have this item come before them as to, um, recommending that, um, they take a safe harbor approach to that. So I bring that up because it's important for the private landowners. I'll do my best to get that information out to the private landowners that, um, that this may move forward and that there's an opportunity to do a, a safe harbor option, which, um, really kind of holds them harmless to, um, any potential impacts that may stem from this, this, uh, this effort. So just trying to keep you up to date on, on some of that information. And one final item, I just wanted to congratulate the Department of Youth Services. My understanding, they received, uh, a $250,000 grant, um, maybe, I'm sure Farr could, um, expand on it, but it's, um, it helps them with their shelter and assessment center that helps pay for that. Uh, D V, congratulations.
Any other announcements?
No follow-up on that.
Okay. Mr. Lichen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we've been down the last couple of weeks when I didn't get to announce, but we did have a successful summer fair hosted by Willamette Park Migration District this last weekend. In fact, the, the headline band was a group that actually was born right out of here, right out of Eugene locally, the Cherry Poppin' Daddies were the headliner and they've gone on to have quite a bit of success over the years. If you like swing music in particular, that's, uh, that's been their, kind of their forte and, and, uh, actually had dinner with, uh, the leader of the band who's from here, Steve, Steve, not Steve Perry from Journey, but Stephen Perry from Cherry Poppin' Daddy. So, uh, anyway, uh, very, very nice guy and, uh, got to talk a little music with him and, and, um, so that was, uh, so summer fair was successful and, uh, great, great family event. Uh, also last week, Bike Ped Advisory Committee, so this is the planning committee putting together a bike, bike pedestrian plan for the state and boy, we're, we're getting closer and closer to finally adopting. Expect to do that sometime, uh, either late this year, maybe early part of next year, but, um, uh, as you can imagine, safety is a, is a significant focus, but economic development continues to be a major focus along with public health and so, uh, there, there's some really opportunities there. And I don't know if folks got the read, uh, but there's a online digital magazine called, uh, Fast Company and, uh, they really are about innovations in technology and business and design. They actually listed Eugene as one of their top 10 emergency tech, uh, high-tech cities in which I thought was pretty great. While it's not Bloomberg and maybe not Forbes, but, uh, they actually focus more specifically on, on different parts of the, uh, the high-tech industry and I think it really fits the bill here because of the different emergency companies here. But I, I say that because Lane County has been a real strong participant with, uh, the accelerator program, RAIN, and, uh, just, uh, this last weekend, Fritti Lab, which was born here, just opened their second location over in Springfield, downtown Springfield. And this again is to really work with young entrepreneurs and to, uh, uh, in a sense, Fritti Lab to fertilize, if you will, the, the, those who are really interested in becoming the, uh, our, our next, I call our future entrepreneurs. And, uh, so it's very, very exciting to see that the work that we're participating in is, is we're starting to see some fruits of our labor and, uh, really want to, in particular, I want to thank Glenda Polling and Sarah Case who've been very involved in that. I know Commissioner Stewart through Regional Solutions has been really involved in that as well. So I think it's, uh, shows good fruits of our labor here that we're going to see these young entrepreneurs, uh, hopefully not only start their businesses here, but remain here. I mean, that's, that's going to be the key moving forward, but great to see a good environment, good press like that, hopefully will trans, transcend long, uh, in, in just with not Eugene's borders, but throughout Lane County's borders, so good, good news. And just also about the manufacturing communities and, you know, want to thank Commissioner Farr. He was, he led our effort last year in the United Front and, uh, uh, I, I think there's really some potential opportunities, uh, being, being named as part of that, uh, moving forward. So look, look forward to see what that will bring, i- if you will, to our, to our community. So, thank you, Chair.
Any other announcements? Commissioner Stewart?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just, I just received one that I think is important to announce. The, my understanding that the BLM has extended the comment period for the current resource management plan. Um, it was due on the 23rd of July, they've extended it now to August 21st, so an additional month for comments. I'll keep the board abreast as to the, what comments the O and C, um, county association's going to make and see if, um, if we would like to make some comments ourselves, so I'll stay tuned.
Excellent. Any other announcements? Well, I got a couple. The first is I'd like to welcome Devin Ashbridge as our new public information officer. It's the first, I think, official board meeting you've been at, because I think you started right before we went on, on, uh, our off weeks there, so.
It's actually worth it for the role today.
Yeah, yeah. It is, yeah, four, four meetings today, right? Um, and, uh, just to, to let you know, uh, El Rapa met last week and one of the actions they did take was, um, they're going to start issuing wood, wood burning advisories, uh, home wood burning advisories, uh, on, uh, starting in October and ending in, in, in April and instead of going from November through March, um, they're just going to extend the, the period. They already do the weather predictions and all that because that's also the outdoor burn season. So it's not any additional work really for the staff to do a, a home wood burning advisory during those, those periods. And if you look at the heating days for this area, that it makes sense to actually issue, um, advisories during that time. Uh, it'd probably be pretty rare we'll get a, a yellow or red advisory, but that relates to our, uh, lane code chapter nine, because we have actions people are supposed to take under those advisories in, in, uh, the unincorporated, uh, UGB areas of Eugene and Springfield, uh, relative to, uh, how much smoke they're allowed to generate and, and the opacity of that smoke. That may be the, the next, uh, issue that comes up with El Rapa will be whether they want to lower the opacity standards. Right now, it's currently 40% in Lane County, Eugene and Springfield, and they're talking about whether it'd be useful to lower it to 20%, which is where Oak Ridge is trying to meet the PM 25 they're out of attainment with, whereas Eugene and Springfield aren't out of attainment. So that will be an interesting discussion for the future. So are there any other announcements from the board?
Actually, ever so briefly, I'll, I'll do, I'll give an update periodically on this, but we have, with Operation 365, we have a commitment that we are going to house every homeless veteran in Lane County by October 31st of this year. And, uh, as of, uh, this last week, we're about halfway toward our goal on that and moving pretty rapidly in that direction. Uh, so we're, I won't go into details of the different things that we're doing, but I'll give you a report on that periodically to let you know that, uh, come October 31st, we will functionally have no homeless veterans in Lane County.
Great. All right, if, that's it for announcements. Um, got a couple, um, future agenda items. It sounds like we had a request from Commissioner Farr. Want to express that again, see if we can get three head nods?
Thank you. Um, we were discussing, uh, just to refresh real quickly, we're talking about the, uh, the tobacco ordinance that we recently passed and are in the process of potentially amending. Uh, discussion, we, we had discussion at the board level today that certain elements of it would be more, uh, compatible with a, uh, county-wide Board of Health ordinance, Board of Health generated ordinance. And I'd like to, uh, ask for head nods for a future agenda item to look at a county-wide tobacco ordinance that would incorporate, uh, coordination with all of the cities in Lane County as well as the, uh, unincorporated areas.
So I support that. I'm seeing Commissioner Sorensen and Commissioner Stewart supporting that?
And if I could make a comment to that real quickly?
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you. I, I, I support that as well. Um, while I'm, I'm fairly confident that the state legislature will probably pass it statewide, but in the case of, if Commissioner Farr and Commissioner Sorensen are correct and they let us down, I think that this is really a plan that we should be moving forward on and, uh, so that if something does not happen in the state legislature, I think it, it does make sense then to look at, to work with the cities and, uh, and incorporate it a county-wide, so I, I support the, I support it.
Thank you. And I'll, you know, I brought it up today for just that reason, because I, I do support the idea. And I think it's similar to our ordinances relative to sick leave drove the discussion of a statewide sick leave law and the preemption of local sick leaves. Our continued work on tobacco licensing, I think, is going to drive the legislature to take action.
I would love our ordinance to be preempted.
Yeah, I would too. I would, I would too. So that, that's, I'm just, I'm thinking, you know, we, we kind of pushed them on, on one side and I think we can push them again on this one, so, um, I appreciate you bringing that back up. Uh, any other agenda team or work session requests? I have one other item if, if we're, if there are no other requests. We need to, um, we have a, a vacancy on the Planning Commission right now and they have advertised and have closed the applications. In the past, we have appointed a subcommittee of commissioners to do the interviewing and make a recommendation to the full commission for the appointment. Um, and that's, you know, uh, one, a couple of times it's been Commissioner Stewart and I, I think it's been Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner Lichen another time. Um, I'd like to ask the board maybe if we could, uh, uh, choose a couple of us or have a couple volunteers and get, uh, assigned to the board to have, for that subcommittee to do the interview process. So, any thoughts?
Am I happy to volunteer?
Uh, looks like I've got, happy to continue. Okay, yeah, that was the two last times, so, and I think, um, you're liaison planning commission right now, right?
I am.
You are, okay. So if we, we move it every year, so I can't remember. So you're the liaison, so it makes sense for you to be on the committee, so, and Commissioner Lichen, if there's no objections, um, I'll just, uh, and, and we have the consent of the board on that, um, then we'll have them do the interview process and bring, uh, forward a recommendation to the full board for the appointment. All right, well, thank, thank you. Is there any other, uh, business for the board today? You want to do a review of assignments real quick?
Um, there were, the only assignments were the, um, the request for the work session on the tobacco ordinance to, to make, to look at it as in terms of being countywide. And then the third reading, I'm assuming you still want the third reading on the, on the, um, the tobacco ordinance to come back on August 4th. I didn't hear any other assignments unless I missed something.
She capture everything for us?
I think so.
Very good, thank you. With that then, we are adjourned and, uh, we're adjourned because I have to reconvene as a joint meeting tonight.
5:30?
5:30, Springfield.
City Hall, right?